I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I have the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Clerk Hopkins here. Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Trustee Kalani?
Here.
Trustee Germaine?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
We have cornered the board. We also have present Township Manager, James Whitman.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germaine. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number five, call of the public. Anybody that called the public this evening? Good evening.
I'm Dwight Stockton, Hartland resident. I want to bring up about the gas tax. You've heard this many, many, many times. We have gas stations here in Hartland that charge the gas tax. There's supposed to be a percentage of that back to what's our roads for. But unless we go up to the state or to the county or somebody, somebody in our government has to go out there and ask them for it because they ain't gonna give it to us. So, Joe was saying that we'd have to go to the state maybe. Well, I'm gonna be up there in May of 22nd, up in the senate office, and if I can find anybody to listen to me, I'll ask them for it. How come we don't get our gas taxed? Because I know Joe Hugh, and he enjoys CME up there often. Because I needle him like I needle you guys. I just think that we're losing the bet on it because we've got a couple of stations that are the highest price in the state of Michigan. So that isn't all tax going to the state. It's their profit side. So we should have a part of that tax money at least coming back to our township, which would help. I don't care if it's $15, it would help. Anything to needle them and make them pay. So it gets up. I don't know whether it'd be the manager's job or not, to, you know, ask the state or the county or whoever it is who gives the refund on it, to give us our share. You take Brighton and Hall, all those streets are all painted, curved and everything else. In fact, they keep redoing them because they have so much money, they don't know what to do with it. So maybe we could use some of that.
Thank you. Anybody else today that called the public? Being none, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
Move.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Trustee Kalani. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is a public hearing. This is our annual budget hearing meeting for fiscal year 2014 and 15. And item number seven A is the General Appropriations Act, but we do that following the public hearing. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Manager Whitman. He's got a short presentation. If anybody's interested, we do have copies, hard copies of our budget over against the wall over here to my left. And with that, James, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As in the past, just do a brief overview of the budget, in particular, the general fund budget. And as part of the Truth in Taxation Act, just make note of the millage rates that would be, are estimated for this year. That is not finalized until a few months down the road. But at this point, we're sustaining the .8 mills for the township, and then 1.8819 for the fire millage. It's worth noting, and I think we'll make this a part of our communication a little more regularly, I had an opportunity to take a look at all the taxing units in the county. As far as townships go, we have one of the lowest township millages of all the townships, at .8. Most of them are point, in the high, .8, .85, up to .9 or more. And I was actually somewhat surprised by that, but because of heavily rollback and other things, our millage rate is one of the lower ones. We have, we've, of course, gone through the projected revenues for the year and are looking at, these are the estimates of that. And it breaks down that pretty much half of our revenue comes from state shared revenue. That is, and that is all dependent on sales tax, and that is all dependent on how many consumer goods are bought throughout the state during the year, and that has been on the uptick, and so that has been good for us.
That's constitutional.
That's constitutional. We get no statutory anymore.
Well, with the new personal property tax legislation that's whipping through Lansing, will we see an increase in our revenues in any way?
No, so that affects property tax, certain personal property elements. You know, the worst case scenario for us is it affects less than 1% of our tax roll. So even if we never got reimbursed, we would have been less than a 1% being to the property tax revenue, just we don't have a lot of industrial. So from that end, it's fortunate. The bills that are being considered now would actually reimburse that through the state program, and so we'll, what it sounds like is we're gonna be made whole on that. We'll probably have to jump through more hoops than it's what it's worth to be made whole on that. That seems to be the pattern coming out of Lansing, but dollar-wise, we are looking to be made whole.
Thank you.
Yep. And that, otherwise, general property tax revenue from that .8 mills makes up about a quarter of our general fund revenue. And then, of course, the other funding sources for the general fund include cable franchise, property tax administration fees, and then some of the other overhead for water and sewer.
James, the revenue estimate from the cable franchise, that's for next fiscal year, is based only on the current, you could say, contracted items, correct? Because I know that there's a possibility that they may want to build something else on township property, and that would, we'd get some more revenue from that.
So those are, that cell tower leases, that all is falling under that other fees. The cable franchise is, for all of Comcast cables going through the public rights away of the township, they pay a percentage back to the township for the use of the public right away. That's their franchise amount. That is, does that have anything to do with cell towers or anything? If they do, that would be additional lease money under the other fees and miscellaneous. Any other questions on the revenue side? So expenditure side is a little bit more detailed, and these are broken up by, you know, department or cost center. But some of our larger departments, of course, are planning and assessing staff-wise, and it's pretty well split evenly across the various services and cost centers that we have, whether it be roads or parks or communications. There's a lot of detail, obviously, within those expenditures. We have about a third of our budget is in salaries and wages, so on top of that is, you know, benefit costs, but otherwise, it's going straight back into investments or service provision that isn't otherwise provided by staff. We are increasing, of course, the chloride applications for gravel roads this year, those to highlight just some of the significant things, from two applications to three. And then there are some one-time projects that we've, of course, talked about with the comprehensive plan and the parks plan and the things, the safer roads and pathways discussions that'll be going on throughout the year. So that's the general fund. If you want to open up the hearing or ask any questions or...
If there aren't any questions from the board, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
In other departments, what's all in that, James?
Yeah, data.
Elections.
Elections gotta be in there.
Cable.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to look which one's the other. So, yeah, a little bit unallocated, which, of course, there is a piece of that which is actually non-cash expense. It's the other departments. If I were to try to go through, I could probably name them all, but...
Okay, well, I didn't see elections on there. I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
Is elections under other? Yes, okay.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
I make the motion.
Motion by Trustee Harper, second by Trustee Petrucci.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The public hearing is open on our budget. Does anybody have any questions from the audience? Any questions? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Petrucci, second by Treasurer Horning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number seven A is the 2014-15 General Appropriations Act. Manager Whitman?
So, I mean, this is following the same format as we have in years past. I would just highlight that we did make a couple updates to account for some changes, one related to the purchase policy and the dollar amounts related to that. We also clarified, I think, for the benefit of all, those budget amendments that will require board approval, and we, of course, wanted to keep in there for the, any budget amendments that have to do with raising anybody's pay amount, that would be a board-approved item, or if there is any capital investments that are greater than $6,000, that would come to the board for approval. So those are a couple of changes you may have noted from years past. And then, we did, we were able to get all the, to take the pool of merit increases and our bonuses that the board had determined, and those are now distributed in the budget that you have in front of you, so that'll be taken care of. We won't have to do a budget amendment on that later like we did last year. So that is included.
James, what is the projected surplus of the budget? I'm trying to find that in the...
Yeah.
That exact number. Would you have that or close to it?
Have to look for it.
Do you have it in the resolution?
It wouldn't be in the resolution, so, well, other than if you looked at your general fund estimated revenue of 2.18 million with approved and estimated expenses of 1.85, so about 330...
330.
Yeah.
They wouldn't put that one in there. What's that? It wouldn't be in there. You have to crack that.
I understand. Yeah, so about 330,000.
But just listen at home that the budget has a surplus.
Yes, 330,000.
14 and 15. Any other questions for the manager?
I think we should note how well we did last year with our current budget. Can you tell us how much under budget you anticipate this year?
We were projecting, I'm gonna say around 450, 412,000.
And our fiscal year ends?
March 31st. And we have, historically, I think, shared this number with you before, we've historically kept spending at about 92% of budget. So, I mean, we've always enjoyed additional surplus than what we originally planned operationally.
Any other discussion or questions? I'll entertain a, this is a resolution.
This is a resolution.
Okay. So I entertain a motion for the resolution.
I'll move to approve resolution to establish General Appropriation Act for 2014-2015 fiscal year.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Hopkins, second by Trustee Kalani. Is there any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Clerk Hopkins, yes. Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Germaine?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Item number seven B is approval of the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority budget fiscal James, how did you want to handle this part?
Whatever pleases the board. You've, of course, discussed it.
Adam was gonna give a brief overview, or is it, what would, pleasure of the board?
I would like to have a refresher from Adam.
He has a bad back right now.
Well, would you rather stand or sit, all right?
The budget for fiscal 14-15 is an approximate 5% increase for Hartland Township, as we discussed at the last meeting, almost exclusively tied to changing the staffing model to provide 24/7 coverage currently where we're staffed, from 7:00 a.m. Monday through 5:00 p.m. Friday. And this would take that staffing model and basically complete the loop across the weekend. And it is certainly not an increased rate we have any expectation of sustaining, and our track record certainly shows that. I guess, barring any further questions, that's really the only change in it, was changing that staffing model, which is what caused that, and our anticipation, in fact, expectation is that we will continue to remain flat and probably perform the way we have over the past five to six years, which is, I think, on average, about a 1.8% per year on average over the five-year period. We are starting to see turnarounds, of course, in the same things that everybody else is, but so far, we've stayed true to our averages, I suppose. We're increasing call volume at anywhere from 6% to 10% a year. Obviously, it fluctuates depending on what period you look at. And our really only tool for that is kind of sculpting what the call types are that we go to. And as service levels increase from EMS, we're able to take more EMS call types out of our response protocols, which is a nice control tool for us to help keep that call volume at least suppressed, but all we're really doing is slowing it down.
I have one follow-up question, similar to what I just asked Manager Whitman. Can you just, for the record, indicate the fire authority's fiscal responsibility over the last several years in terms of your budget, what you've actually expended?
As far as, I can tell you over the last, I believe it's a six-year period, we are averaging cost increases of about 1.8% per year over that period. Generally, it is, well, almost exclusively, it is related to increased call volumes and that nature. In addition to that, out of our budgets, we make a contribution out of the fire authority budget to a capital replacement improvement fund, which, as it continues to build, is responsible for paying more and more for those replacement items. Obviously, the big-ticket item being fire trucks. And right now, we're at a position where we're usually putting at least 50% down, if not more. And the goal in the next, basically, three to five years is get that fund to the point where it is 100% funded, so to speak, so that we are saving, I can't even tell you how much in interest costs and other issues, where expected capital replacement items, when they come due for replacement, we're able to simply replace them instead of having to either take loans on fire trucks or bonds or whatever else. Not only substantial interest savings on what that would be, but in addition to that, generally, when you're saying, hey, basically, hey, I have cash, it's a much better place to negotiate on price from.
Is, I have a question. The line dealing with Captain 708.3, is that where the new full-time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what I, I just wanted clarification of.
Well, personally, I thought you should have said the fire authority has a very good track record of meeting higher budgets in the past several years.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I'm sorry. You're absolutely correct. And the question hanging, how did we perform against our budget projections?
Yes.
Yeah, I cannot tell you what the percentage is. I can't tell you, we are always, I can't remember not being at least 2% under. Generally, we're, and I would be ballparking, but in that 5% to 10% under range. And what we do with that is sweep that into that capital savings fund also, to again offset future costs of known equipment replacements.
And this is not a financial question, but just more of a curiosity one, and I'm sure you don't have the exact numbers in front of you, but looking at your typical, say, monthly or even weekly calls that you would make, what percentage of them would you allocate to the very major roads, US 23 and AM 59?
12.65%, because I was looking at that yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's kind of our contribution to Livingston County because of the major roads that go through our town.
Yeah, we spend a decent amount of time on them, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, it's the last place I like being. It's a very challenging place to operate, because not only do you have the incident in front of you, but you have the added concern that we don't have anywhere else on the planet, which is, what's behind me? So, yeah, we spent quite a bit of time on both US 23 and AM 59, and then, obviously, some of the other quicker surface streets, Clyde Road, Old US 23, Flanton Road, you know, the, we're there quite a bit.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Heartland Deerfield Fire Authority budget for fiscal year 2014-15.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Germaine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no pending business tonight. Under new business, we have a purchasing policy amendment, and, James, would you like to highlight the changes to that? We did discuss this at our administration meeting and answered a few questions, so if you'd like to highlight the changes you're suggesting for the board's action tonight.
Yeah, this revision is long overdue, and I guess I would say that, you know, we don't go about any revision to a control policy lightly, so I guess we've spent a little extra time making sure that we brought forth something that, what we think balances ability of our staff to do their job with agility and responsiveness while also maintaining accountability and internal controls, and I think you'll find that in this policy as it's drafted. There is a shift on the increase as to the bureaucratic steps that would have to be taken to receive preapproval for purchases. On the accountability side, there is a, the burden is really on the purchaser to plan, and that is to plan in the budget and to, with appropriate planning through the budget process, that makes it easier for them to make that purchase later on. And there's, we've also added specific language that I would be more intentional about auditing those purchase decisions to make sure that they're demonstrating good stewardship. So that's the highlights of it. Happy to answer any questions the board has, and certainly, if it pleases the board, I'd offer this for approval tonight.
Again, we, as an administration group, went through this pretty thoroughly, and everything that was brought up, that were, you know, there's a lot of checks and balances in there, and again, there's more than one person looking at all of this as it goes through, no different than it was earlier. I've just amended some of the dollar amounts that seem to be actually being too many layers for some of the smaller items that were on there. So that was raised up a little bit, and as James suggested, that puts some more onus on next year's budget, so if it gets approved and through that process, it's gonna make it a lot easier on this end.
I'll move to make a motion to approve the revised purchasing policy as presented. Support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. And then, number nine B is under new business, Michigan Chloriding Contract 2014. And this takes, we work with the county on this to get the best bang for the dollar. So, James, is there anything else on that?
It's only, I mean, it's not a consent agenda because it represents a larger-than-12,000-dollar purchase, so it's pretty straightforward.
And this does include next year, we'll be chloriding three times.
Yes. We already benefit from the volume rate that the county gets, so...
I do, it has nothing to do with chloride, but in light of the weather, I just know an enorm amount of potholes. Should we also look at possibly, not tonight, but supplementing with some sort of gravel supplement to deal with some of the situations we have in the township, maybe at the entrances onto the major roads or something like that? Or at least maybe have some further discussion with the road commission to bring in more additional gravel? I do know that recently, some, they did it to Pleasant Valley, they came down Pleasant Valley, and it was just absolutely horrible. But I also saw, I've been on Hacker, and Hacker is just absolutely horrible right now. I don't know, I haven't been there recently, but I don't know if they brought, but it seems to be, you know, it's not enough just to come through with a grader. They need to, with this terrible weather, they need to put something down.
I know that the road commission was looking at the need to address those frost-related problems that are gonna come about, and I think there was an article on that over the weekend that mentioned that the $100,000 in improvements they were hoping to do is probably gonna get cut in half because they're gonna have to reinvest that money into fixing potholes. I don't know how much of a debt that'll put in our issue, so we can get a feel for how that looks, because they will be doing it as soon as the weather breaks. And then, of course, it's always the board's privilege to invest more if they'd like, so...
I look at it as a Band-Aid. I know it may be putting money down a pothole, but take it from me, as someone who travels the roads in Heartland and the dirt roads, I've spent probably a good $500 or $600 on undercarriage work on my vehicles this past winter. And I think it's a small price to pay if we can find a way to deal with these road issues. I know the road in...
We're looking at a long-term fix, but that wouldn't address those things that we're gonna see this spring.
And note that the quote for this year is the same as last year.
Yes.
The price has changed. It's been pretty consistent for several weeks, I recall.
Yeah, it has been. I would expect in the next year or two, it'll tick up.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2014 road chloriding contract with our from Michigan chloride sales. Support it.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Petrucci. Is there any discussion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Next is board reports, and we're in our first meeting in March. Trustee Germaine?
I would just like to, on behalf of the HERO Board, and perhaps Joe, or Joe would like to add further, but the township has requested HERO to prepare a procedure, if you will, so that the building can be used by outside groups. And the HERO... And, um, the HERO Board at our meeting last week, we, a little less than a week ago, approved that and, um, will be presented to the township, to the township manager for his review and approval. And I think it's a, a good process, I think it's very doable, and it will allow that building to experience even greater use than it's currently, um, being used by the fire for their training sessions, our department, and also the teen center. That's all for Stephen. Thank you.
Trustee Petrucci?
Uh, I just want to remind everybody that we have the, uh, the Player Authority Awards banquet, uh, not banquet, but, uh, presentation on Friday at 7:00 at the high school. Um, hope that you can attend. These guys deserve our support, and, uh, they're gonna be recognizing a, a few very special people. And the public is, uh, welcome to come as well. 7:00 Friday at the high school.
Which high school?
I think I got one high school.
What's that, another high school?
The new high school.
The new high school, which is out in town.
I'm not glad I asked because I know where I would have been. I would have been at the other one.
I won't be able to, I'm gonna be out of town, so I won't be able to...
In the auditorium, I'm at.
At the new high school.
Right, at the new high school.
It's always gonna be new to me.
The other place is not a high school anymore.
That's right.
Thank you.
There's one in every bunch.
Uh, clerk Hopkins?
Um, I just would like to let everybody know that, uh, they will be sending out absentee ballot applications, um, within the next week. I was hoping to get them out this week, uh, but I'm waiting for the Bureau of Elections to do their creation of the election in the, uh, computer system, uh, so once that happens, we'll get them run off and in the mail. Um, again, that election is, uh, on May 6th, and, uh, you have up until, uh, uh, April 7th to register to vote, uh, to vote in that election.
Larry, uh, I have a, a, a student who lives out of, on the other side of the state. While at school, does, uh, and he is previously, um, voted absentee, does he need to do anything different?
Yeah, he'll have to fill out an application every time, for every election, you have to fill out an application, but if he just gives us a call, he gives his address to send that application to, we can send it to it, to him up at school.
Okay.
And he fills that out, tells us the address he wants the ballot sent to, since it's maybe different than his registered address, um, and, uh, can help him through that whole thing.
Okay, great, thanks.
That's it for me.
Okay. Treasurer Horning?
Um, I just want to thank everybody for their well wishes and prayers for my mom and especially my staff that allowed me to be there with her the last few days. I really appreciate it. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, trustee Kalani?
Uh, I have no report.
And trustee Harper? Okay, and, um, James and I had a, a nice meeting this morning with the chamber, making sure that those doors are open, um, and looking for feedback from them, uh, to continue to work together to make us the best place to bring up business to in our community, and that was very well received, and I think they appreciate those updates that we do about every quarter. And next week is board review. Board review starts on Monday, and, and there's sessions on Tuesday that go until 9:00 in the evening and on Thursday in the morning, um, so if you want to go to the board review, uh, call at the township. Dr. Jim Heslop, who is our assessor, and he'll set up a time that you can come in, go to the board review. Manager Whitman?
Uh, just one highlight from the operational reports. I had, uh, given you a copy of the draft of the, uh, target market analysis grant application we're looking to do. Um, uh, if you have any, uh, feedback or, or suggested revisions, be happy to take that. I'll be looking to submit that, uh, probably tomorrow, and, uh, otherwise, happy to answer any questions the board may have. Operations?
Um, the new branding that we adopted, um, if, if, if an entity, organization is interested in utilizing that, what's the process for them?
Uh, we haven't fully defined that yet. Uh, we've, uh, been kind of a soft rollout, um, until we get the website up, um, but certainly, we can do that. If, uh, somebody's interested, then give me a call, we'll probably talk with, uh, communications director about what the easiest approach for folks is. Um, that's, it belongs to the community, so we want to make sure that's available.
Well, I know that, you know, the HERO has, um, a website, the teen center has a website. We'd like to try and incorporate that branding as part of that.
Sure.
As soon as we can.
I can have her reach out.
Okay.
Who should she?
Probably Kay. And then Courtney Pronishin is the one that, that kind of, I think, runs, she's one of our board members that kind of handles the website changes, so, um, probably Kay would be initially, but I think it would be Courtney. Okay? Do you think we should do that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Did you have something else?
That was all I had.
Okay, just, um, briefly, we did meet with Mike Schmidt, the parks...
Oh.
...meeting this morning, uh, or this afternoon, uh, for this meeting, and this, he's gonna go back to his team at the schools and the, and the different classes, come back with some ideas for the park benches, uh, and some, did you have some other ideas?
Well, I think it's important for the board.
Yeah.
It's kind of a, we, we need to get away from the chicken and egg kind of situation. The, I think, the board needs to adopt a standard that it wants to have in its parks and it, you know, whether it be a, the park benches, pavilions, shelters, emergency shelters, whatever you want to have, you, you need to have some ideas, you need to make some decisions. The thought process would be that, um, we want to incorporate, I, I look at it as a three-legged stool. Uh, we have the schools, HERO, and, um, our, and the township, and I think it's important for this board to be comfortable with what standard and the costs associated with that. So we've asked, uh, Mike Schmidt and his folks, and he works with the architectural students at the, in, at the high school, as well as the building trades at the high school. They, uh, he'd like to sort of, sort of make it a little competition, have them come back with several renderings on, we start, start off with park benches. You know, we don't have to pick one or the, any of them, but at least have them come before us. If we have something out of those that we like, and we like the, the breakdown in terms of price, then we can adopt that standard, and now we have a standard that we can look to in terms of having HERO promote for those who might want to purchase a park bench for a memory of a loved one or donation for whatever reason, um, well, we can adopt that standard. The question that I think that, um, we would ultimately need to identify, because I know, uh, Bob is working on the CIP, is just how much of a cost are we looking at in terms of those types of, um, amenities, so he can incorporate it in the CIP. And he is going to have conversations with Mike Schmidt in the next few days, and I think he's also going to somehow, uh, work with Mike and the students to, to see how that's going to transpire. But at the end of the day, we will set the standard, um, and, uh, we'll have an opportunity to take a look at that.
And there, he was also gonna explore the signs, uh, for the park signs, the, um...
For heritage.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, for the, for the sponsorship.
Yeah, right.
Um, he's, so he's gonna take a look at that for us also.
Okay.
So, because I think that was something that we were...
We've been in...
...take a strong look at.
Yeah, we've been talking to him about that.
And I did have one other question. Have we, have we chosen a date yet in May for the big cleanup?
Yes.
We have.
May 17th.
That's...
Yeah, Saturday, May 17th.
And then that's, well, we have something published or something that'll, that'll get out, so people will know.
Yeah. When it gets closer, you'll start hearing about it.
We have flyers here at the township hall already, if anybody wants to come by and get one.
I know it doesn't feel like it, but that's only like...
Yeah.
Anything else from the board this evening? If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Germaine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you.